Hi, good afternoon and welcome to the board open meeting at on June 16, 2020. It is now 3:10 and I'm going to call this meeting into order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Actually, yes, we're going to start with Pledge of Allegiance. Bear with me. If I can have Wade, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, that would be great.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. One nation, for the God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Wade. Okay, we have some public comment. Mrs. Starkins, will you please read the first one and then I'll take over? Thank you.
Sure, so this was sent by Kristin Canata. Hello, I'm reaching out because I recently heard that instrumental music has been cut from elementary schools. To be honest, I am shocked. A lot of parents are very upset by this. It is so important, especially during this time, that our children have an outlet. Music and art help them to create, express, and deal with possible stresses that may be going on. We cannot let art go, not to mention we are in Los Angeles, where art and all forms is considered to be abundant. What can we do as a community to make sure art and music do not get cut? We need to keep our children happy and feeling safe during this uncertain time of COVID. Myself and other parents are concerned with not only physical health, but the mental health of our kids and are going through... Sorry, did you say something? No, sorry. Our kids are going through, especially the younger kids. Please let us know what we can do to bring back instrumental music and to make sure that art and music do not continue to be cut. Thank you, Kristin Canata.
Thank you, Mrs. Starkins. The next letter that I have is from Deborah Terme. And she writes, please open our schools in the fall. Our kids are suffering with a social interaction and academic instruction. As you all know, children are not as affected by getting sick by the pandemic. For those families that have older grandparents living at home with them, they should have the option to have home learning. Thank you.
And if I could just make one quick comment just regarding the first letter that was sent, just for clarification, that we are looking at rearranging our resources a bit and we are looking at how we could get creative and provide that instrumental music experience at the elementary schools.
Thank you. We're going to move on with our agenda and so may I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you for that. So the motion has been moved, the agenda has been moved by Mrs. Walker Schuman and seconded by Mrs. Marcus. All those in favor, please?
Aye.
Raise your hand. Think I can see you all. Yes. Where's Mel? Oh, there is Mel. Okay, thank you. We are going to move on to human resources. May I have a motion, please, for the resolution?
I'll make a motion for the approval of Resolution 2019-2020034, implementing certificated layoffs and terminating services of certificated employees as a result of reduction or discontinuation of particular kinds of services.
I will second. Thank you. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Discussion? Okay. It passes 5-0. Mrs. Marcus, did you have something to say?
No, I just want to move the next item.
Okay, please do so. Please go ahead.
I move for the ratification of an agreement with Edgar Garza Construction for rerouting fire alarm and main panel connection to breaker panel on the blacktop in order to investigate the source of drilling fluid related to the horizontal well drilling under the campus by the Metropolitan Transportation Authority.
I'll second that.
Okay. Discussion?
Yes.
Are those in favor? Oh, Mr. Spitz.
I would like to know whether this cost is going to be reimbursed by MTA.
Good afternoon, Mr. Spitz. This is Sierra Michelson speaking. Yes, that is going to be reimbursed by Metropolitan Transportation Authority.
Thank you. Any other further questions from the board? Okay, we're going to take the vote and I'm going to do roll call, just so that we're, I can see everyone or hear everyone. We'll start with Mr. Margot.
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. That's 5-0, thank you for that.
I'm making a vote again. A motion to the adoption of Resolution Number 2019-2020-3033 for approval of award of a contract to Edgar Garza Construction for certain additional work at the Beverly Hills High School.
So moved.
I'll second.
I think I seconded that, Mr. Margot. But thank you.
I have a question about that.
Please.
What exactly, what exactly was the additional work? Is that something to do with the one that they had that we didn't get a good amount of, the bid before? Is this for that same work that there was no bid or that the bid was unacceptable? I don't know. There was an item about tiling or something that was...
Sierra, can you answer the purpose of this resolution, please? Can you clarify that for Mrs. Marcus and for the board?
In other words, what additional work?
We're having a great time out there.
I'm not sure if Mrs. Michelson, is Mrs. Michelson still with us?
Yeah, I apologize. My mic was just muted.
Okay, thanks.
I apologize. Now, this work is pertaining, to the best of my understanding, to the work that is being done surrounding the fire alarm and main panel connection to the breaker panel that is also being covered by Metropolitan Transportation Authority. There was some additional work that was going to be done pertaining to some communication lines discovered in the same vicinity and it also pertains to the same work, again, covered by Metropolitan Transportation Authority.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any further questions or comments from the board? No? Okay, we're going to go for the vote and I'm going to do a roll call. Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Thank you for that. And we're moving on to, this concludes our meeting and open. And so now we're going to move into our budget study session and I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Roach. Thank you.
Thank you, President Hacker. Let me share my screen with the, with the board. Can everyone see my screen? Hello?
Yes. Hi, Ken.
Hi, Ken too. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. So before I get started, there's a couple items that I wanted to bring to the board's attention. We received today the draft of the JPA agreement from the city this morning. Staff is going to take a look at it this week. I believe we're going to meet on Thursday to go through the draft, proposed changes from the city. And we have a meeting scheduled with the city officials on Monday to go over the draft. So we're excited about that moving forward. Finally, there was a question also about August layoffs. So as the board knows, generally a layoff window is March 15th for our certificated employees. Whenever, by code, by law, whenever there's less than 2% COLA, they, they have the option, the state has the options to allow districts to open that window back up in August. Now, because of the recent passage of the budget by the legislators, which is not going to be the final budget, but the, the version that was just passed by the legislation and legislators in Sacramento, that August window has been closed off. So I believe CSBA and some other entities are asking boards maybe to write to Sacramento to say, please open that August window back up for additional layoffs. It's not really that critical for Beverly Hills Unified, but for our neighboring districts that have multiple FTEs that they're going to have to reduce for next year, it's really critical to have that August window. So there's a, there's a letter writing push right now to have that August window open for districts. So we want to, if there's no questions about those two items, we want to go ahead and jump into, jump into the budget overview. We're going to start with a review of the estimated actuals and talk about the next year's budget, the multi-year projections, the reserve, some of the other programs and next steps. So let's go ahead and jump into our estimated actuals for this year, 1920. That's the middle column you see there. This, these are our general fund revenues projected for 1920. So you'll see the first item, property tax revenue. There's an asterisk by that. I just wanted to bring to your attention that, that we've had some delay in receipt of current year property taxes. The county is holding back about 5% of our April receipts. They know that, we know that. They say they're going to make good on that hopefully by June, but we have heard anecdotally that some people did not pay their property taxes in April. So that's a little bit of concern for us, but I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention. JPA revenue, of course, we're supposed to receive our fourth quarter payment by the end of April. We're still waiting on our fourth quarter payment, but we're sure that's going to come. And then finally, under other state revenue, I just want to bring it to your attention. When you look at estimated actuals, you'll see that other state revenue says 6.4 million, an increase from, from 4.2 million last year actuals. That's really not the case. The estimated actual number is a budget number and included is that, in that is the STIRS on behalf number, which is a little over $2 million. So the difference between last year and estimated this year is only a couple hundred thousand dollars. So I don't want you to think when we do the estimated actuals in September and you see other state revenue back at $4 million, what happened to our $2 million? That's just a budget number for the STIRS on behalf. And I'll show you where it is on the expense side on the next slide. So any questions about the revenue for the current year? Okay. We'll go into expenses for the current year. You'll see an increase just under $1 million for certificated positions, a decrease though in hourly subs and stipends, and we were kind of expecting that, an increase in classified positions. Employee benefits, you see a $4 million increase. That's where the STIRS on behalf expense side is. So that really in the end, when we close the books, that $20 million, 20.5 million will be closer to $18.5 million or a little bit less. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that STIRS on behalf expenses. You see on down supplies. Services, one note on services is that we've included the cost, the legal cost for eminent domain that we're going to move from Measure E into Fund One, General Fund. So that's included in this cost. I broke out conference and travel because we talk a lot about conference and travel. We're showing that a $221,000 expense estimated for 1920. When we close the books, it'll be closer to $200,000. It will not be that high, which will be a decrease from the prior year. So that's what our general fund estimated actuals are looking like as we move into budget development. So there's a lot of things going on, a lot of moving parts in developing our budget parameters for next year. We have a lot of funding uncertainties. If you look at that second bullet there about the HEROES Act federal funding, we don't, we're not sure if we're going to get that funding at the moment. And then the allocation methodology for the COVID-19 relief dollars, the CARES dollars are still in flux. So what does that mean for us? So in total, the state of California has already received from the federal government about $5.9 billion in CARES Act monies. And $1.4 billion of that has been distributed already to school districts. And our portion of that was a little over $400,000 and that's already in the budget. And we've been expending that for COVID-19 related expenses, distance learning, things like that. So there's another $4.56 billion and the governor and the legislators are locked in a battle about how those monies are going to be distributed and they still haven't come to an agreement. So the legislators say they would like $2.9 billion of that to go out based on LCFF, 1.5 billion based on the special ed count, 100 million based on ADA, and another $63 million based on the needs and food services. The governor's plan is that the 2.9 billion for LCFF would only go to districts that have a high number of free and reduced students or a high EL population, high unduplicated count, are concentration districts. So if the governor gets his way, the amount of money that we would receive would be significantly less than if the legislators get their way. So, so we haven't put any of that money right now into the budget for, for 2021. We do have a calculation for the legislative solution. If the legislators get their way, that would be an additional one point, just under $1.6 million for our district to address distance learning COVID-19 expenses. But we're not sure at this point how those dollars are going to be allocated. As I said earlier, we're still, we're still have some concern about property taxes and then we're continually, continuing to work on the JPA negotiations. On the program side, we're going to spend a lot of time in the next few weeks talking about what the model is going to look like for next year, which will impact our classroom custodial schedules, school athletics, food service delivery, our student safety, employees, those employees that work specifically to ensure student safety, whether it be crossing guards, playground aids, site security. So all of that's going to play a part in, in developing the program for next year, which are expenses, which is, you know, is the budget. And then, and finally, we're going to be working on the strategic plan in July, hopefully finishing it up in August. And those, those goals of the district need to be incorporated into the budget. So we have here a lot of funding uncertainties and we have here a lot of program uncertainties. So that's where we are with the, the budget parameters at the moment. We've added a couple of things into the general fund budget based on discussions with the cabinet, with the superintendent, that we believe there's a real need to get our, our board policies, administrative regs up to date. And we believe that we could work with CSBA to update those policies and keep them updated. So we've added an additional $10,000 into the budget to get that accomplished next school year. We also have a need in talking to HR and the cabinet and actually even talking to our bargaining groups to update our job descriptions because they're really out of date. They don't really reflect what our employees are doing on a day-to-day basis. So we feel that it's important at this point to add some dollars into the budget to get those job descriptions updated. So very quickly, looking at the multi-year projection. So the column in the middle, 2021, is next year's budget. And then you have the two out years. You'll see, this is the same slide you saw a couple of weeks ago, the total revenues and then the salaries, services, other costs. So you'll see there's been some change in the operational impact. So we're projecting deficit spending in 2021 of 1.2 million, 2122 of 2.2 million, and 2223 of 3.4 million dollars. So those are current projections in the three out years. So what does that do to our fund balance and reserve? You'll see here on this slide, in 2021, we estimate we're going to begin next year with 18.9 million. Then you have an operational impact of a little over $1 million. Why is that not $1.2 million? Well, it's because it's a little less because we're earning some interest in Fund 17. So we count that against the operational impact. So the estimated ending fund balance, 17.9. We have legally restricted dollars, categorical dollars that we set aside. So we're estimating the reserve at the end of next year to be about 20.95%, 21%. So remember, our board policy requires that we keep a 20% reserve. Taking that forward into 2122, we have another operational deficit. Our reserve drops to 18.39% and drops again the following year to 13.86% if we take no additional actions as a district. Very quickly, I just want to go over some of the, the other programs. These are our federal programs. Basically, we're going to budget them at the same level as they were in the current year. You have Title I for our at-risk students. Title II for professional development. Title III for English language learners. And CTE Perkins for our VOKED program at the secondary level. Remember too, with Title I, that we had to share a portion of that with our, our private schools in our, in our area. So we had to share a little bit of that with our private schools. Those are our federal dollars. Some of our state programs, unrestricted lottery, about $519,000 comes in from unrestricted lottery. We use all of that completely in teacher salaries. That goes completely into the teacher salary bucket to help us keep our class sizes small, actually. We get another portion of lottery, we call restricted lottery. That goes directly to ed services and they use that for their, for their textbook options and instructional materials. We get a little toupee money for tobacco use prevention via Laco. And career tech ed incentive. So last year, actually in the current year, we did receive a grant of about $122,000, I believe, from the state for career tech ed incentive. We will receive no money next year for career tech ed incentive. So that $698,000 comes completely from the general fund for support. Now, we will have some carryover from the current year that'll go into the budget after we close the books. But for the most part, that program is supported, at least next year, through the general fund. I know we have a lot of questions about career tech. Special ed now, and I hope Laura will jump in if I say anything incorrect. These are the buckets for special ed.
I will.
Good, good. We have our federal IDA funds, 846,000. Some IDA funds for preschool and that program, I think, is at Hawthorne. We get a little bit of money for our transition kiddos. The biggest bucket, of course, is our, our state special ed fund funding, which is $1.7 million estimated at this point. The $9.7 million is our, our local contribution to that program. And then we get a little bit of money for mental health, $38,000. So I'm going to keep on going. So we do have some additional, some monies coming in for 2021. We have about $423,000 that we're actually going to receive from the state. That was part of the, the $1.4 billion that the state's already allocated, but we haven't received the dollars yet. We'll receive them actually in July. Routine restricted maintenance. We are allocating just under $3 million for routine restricted maintenance out of the general fund budget. Those basically are maintenance and operations. And then food services, I want to spend just a second to talk about food services. We have a, we have a big problem with food services right now. You know, if you look at the revenue, you'll see that 126,000 comes from the, making our claims, 8,000, just a, just a little bit from the state. $500,000 of our, of our food service budget comes from sales. So if we do not have the students at school, that, you know, the à la carte sales will be slashed. So we're going to then have to look at the model. So we'll have to look at salaries, we'll have to look at our, our food costs. So as the board is aware, you know, we never want to talk about layoffs, but if our students aren't there, we don't produce as many meals, we would have to give, you know, 60-day notice to some of these employees probably to reduce some hours because we're not just going to need them because we're not going to be able to produce those meals. Now, we're looking at different scenarios, different solutions. We're looking at an online system where parents could order, paid parents could order their meals and they could be delivered to classrooms, kind of like a Grubhub, but just run by us. So we're looking at different, different options, but it's really concerning because, you know, you can see that two-thirds of our operational budget comes from those kind of à la carte sales. So that's going to be a big issue. So just, just to let you know, we're, we're going to budget 376,000 as the general fund support, but that could easily go to $500,000 or $600,000 if we don't act quickly in the, to match up our food service program to what our instructional, operational program looks like in the fall. Some other just quick notations, you know, deferred maintenance is in the budget. I'm excited about that. We're actually going to transfer those dollars and allocate those dollars for deferred maintenance. Measure E and Measure BH bond projects, we're going to end the year with about $225 million in those funds. That will be sufficient to carry us through 2021 and through a large part of 2122. But we'll probably have to do a cash draw or sell some bonds in '22 as those funds will be depleted as we finish up Elrodeo and continue on at the high school. I already mentioned that the, the, the other funds for the COVID expenses are too fluid, they're not in the budget. At the moment, we have the 2% OPEB liability funding in the budget. And as I said earlier, the instructional model is going to dictate if we're going to need to make some adjustments in our employees in the, in the fall. So next steps, we're going to have a public hearing, budget adoption on the 23rd. We will be working on the strategic plan over the summer. We fully expect the state is going to revise their budget in Ju-, in August after they get July tax receipts. So we think the state's going to have a brand-new budget in August. We're starting a school August 17th. We'll bring the unotted actuals back to you at the beginning of September. And sometime in September or before, if we can, we'll bring back needed budget adjustments because there's going to need to be some based on program design and based on a revenue that comes in. So that's it in a nutshell and I'm ready to answer any questions or have a discussion about the budget with the board.
Thank you, Wade, for that. We're going to now go, I'm imagining there's no one else from staff that wants to present or stipulate anything for the board before we begin with questions or comments? Ms. Chisholm or, I don't see Dustin here, is Dustin here? Nobody?
No, not right now, but there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Okay, great. So we're, we'll start with Mrs., I'm sorry, we're going to start with Noah.
This is Noah. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Noah. It's just Noah, it's Mr. Noah.
I'm in touch with that side of me, I'm good. So we, we've had a tradition of doing this drill year after year where we look at these projected operational deficits and it gives us a moment of pause and then we realized after we get our actuals that we usually come out even or ahead. Now, after eight years of this, I have no reason to think it's going to be any different this time either. I know we've discussed in past meetings about the certain actions that we might consider taking to reduce the budget, reduce expenditures. I don't, I think it's premature to do that right now. I think there's too many unknowns. We don't know how we're going to be delivery instruction, we haven't decided that. So we don't have a lot of those intricacies that we can discuss. So for now, I would say thank you, Wade, for presenting this. And like every year, you know, it's, this is all fluff and nonsense until it's real. So it's, it's...
Wait a minute.
No, 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 no. It's not, it's not, it's all projected. What I mean, you know, it's projected, Wade. So it's not, it's not that it's necessarily nonsense, but it's more, this is going to kind of guide us a little bit into decision-making where I think we can consider things like, you know, if we don't already have a hiring freeze, I think we kind of do. What we were doing is backfilling positions. I don't think we're really creating anything new, but little things like that. I don't think we're really creating anything new, but little things like that might keep us in check. But, but I am not ready to make any major decisions on any programs or deferred maintenance or OPEB or anything at this point. I just, I think it's too premature without a plan for the school year next summer, next fall. So I will take everything that you said seriously. And when the time comes and the, and the board and the district decide on what twenty twenty, twenty twenty one is going to look like, then we might have to have a more serious conversation. But right now, I would stay the course. So thank you very much, staff and everybody, and Wade and your staff for compiling all this in preparation for next week's adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Margot. Mr. Spitz.
Yes. Wade, thank you very much for the update. And I have a lot of, I have more confidence in, in these numbers and these projections than I have had in the past before Wade, you were aboard. One thing that I think we have to be aware of because it's significant in terms of dollars is that this is a projection of of a cost of living increase of two and a half percent in the third year that we've already shown here. But no COLA increase in the second year, year after this coming year. Year after the new year that we're in now. I just want to point out. There's a helicopter above me. I guess you can all hear it. Just one moment. Okay. We're on a helicopter path. Happens frequently. If by any chance negotiations could wind up with a COLA increase in twenty twenty one, twenty two, I just want to point this out. A COLA increase would would wind up hitting the reserve with about a million six at the end of the third year. Each percent, each percent increase in salaries is about four hundred thousand and so like a two percent would be eight hundred thousand. And that would be for two years, that'd be a million six. So that means if that happened, that means that the ending reserve after the third year would be about ten million rather than eleven point six million. And so I just want to point that out. Form, form, I must say that in a period of time that we are projecting deficit spending and hits on our reductions in our reserve. My preference would be to postpone the OPEB contributions for that period of time. I think that, I think that it's likely that these projections are going to come about. And if we postpone the OPEB contributions, that would, over this period of time, that would, that would keep about two point four million in the reserves over this period of time. So that at the end of the third year, instead of having thirteen point nine million in reserve, we have sixteen point three million or close to that twenty percent that we're supposed to have. So that would definitely be my preference. We don't lose anything if we postpone the OPEB reserve. We, we merely extend the period of time before the unfunded liability would be fully funded. So those are, those are my comments. Thank you.
Mrs. Walker Schuman.
Thank you, Wade. Thanks for the presentation. It was very comprehensive. I do have a couple of questions and I, and I want to say something so the public is aware. One of the things that we talked about a couple of years ago was being able to recruit the finance committee to weigh in on decisions like this before the board actually has to make these decisions. It's something that was a central component of, of my campaign. And I just want to make sure that everyone understands that in this position, while we're looking at the budget, we have brought the finance committee into these conversations. We've had options that we've gotten from our actuary. And we're looking at those options and we're going to be getting recommendations from the finance committee before we actually decide how to move forward. So I think that's, I think that's something the public should note, that this is not just, you know, the, the board sitting here weighing the options and making a decision. We're actually getting some really good consultation, not just from the finance committee, but obviously from, from our wonderful cabinet and from Mr. Roach. So that, that's just for public edification. My question is, we have a bunch of electives that I know fall under our regular curriculum. This is really directed to you, Wade. If we were to apply, if we were to flip like photography, journalism, architecture into career technical education, would that make us eligible for additional funds? For additional grant money? For those particular classes?
You know, I have to admit, I've not read in the last year or two the criteria they use to judge those grants. So I, I can't go out on a limb and say, it's something that we can explore as a district for sure. They give those grants in really a strange way. They're not fiscal year based. You'll get one and it goes for a period of like eighteen months or twenty months. But I can definitely explore that with the instructional division.
Okay, and the CTE funding is, just so that we're all on the same page, there's the federal dollars, the state dollars, but those are not entitlements like a determination based on property taxes or anything like that. That is actually based on applications that we make and are awarded dollars for.
Correct.
Okay. So my next subject is on food services. I think this has been a real, you know, loss for us for years. This has been something that we end up having to transfer. I think quite a lot of money from the general fund to support and, and we're regularly in the negative, are we not? This is not a revenue generating area for us.
No, it's very seldom that a district like ours would be in the positive just because of the nature of our students. If we were really high free and reduced and had a lot of claims to the federal government, it's possible, but just because of our student body will never be, under this current model, will never be in the positive.
Okay, but, but I think breaking even would probably be a satisfactory place as well.
That would be wonderful.
As long as we're not in the red, I think.
Right.
So I, so I would love to see this as an opportunity. I'm sure that, you know, I'm sure that you're always interested in trying to make us at a net zero instead of in the negative to really kind of examine our food services, yes, because of COVID, but also going forward so that it doesn't end up being a loss center for us. Let's see, what else? I think that's mostly it. I think every, it was a very thorough presentation. I think it covered a lot of the things that we're, that we're talking about and nervous about. But I, I agree with Mr. Margot and, and also Mr. Spitz that, you know, this is not, these are not in stone. This is the best we can do, our best guess now, and, and we have to move forward as we get, you know, more solid information. So thank you for the presentation and look forward to continuing the conversation.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus.
Good afternoon. I would like to also comment on your presentation, Wade. It was, first of all, very informative. It was very understandable and I think for that, it really helps to go through it and, and see what's happening. I, I did ask a couple of questions before the meeting today and I'd like to just point them out because I, I think that they, we made a big issue about the special ed department last year and the revamping. I think Laura, Mrs. Chizam, you remember that discussion of increasing teachers or whatever and increasing the spectrum of what we can offer the students. And at that point, this was supposed to help us with our non-public school. And according to what you said is that for we were able to probably reduce for each student, it was fifty thousand dollars a student. And we reduced by eight students approximately, the number of students that are in that program. So it sounds like we were able to save around four hundred thousand dollars for that program. And I'm hoping that, I don't know if you, if you see any foreseeable future, any more students that might be also eligible for that pro, I mean, that we can keep in the district and the savings because I think that's important. I, I didn't know if that was going to be a continuing trend. And I thought maybe you might have something to say about that.
Sure. Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. Definitely, the purpose of increasing our continuum of placement options through reconfiguration was to help keep students in district as much as possible. I just want to go back and give you a little bit of history. If the board would indulge me, I have a document that I'd like to, to present as well that you can see some of the information. Give me one second. Okay. That's done. All right. Hold on one second. It gives, it gives the historical information. At one point, I was asked about historical information for the the special education department and I went back and worked with Wade in his department. Oh, it's not letting me present it and went through and, and answered some of these questions. So give me a second while I work on trying to get that up. But the next piece is, so when I first arrived in the district in twenty seventeen, we had approximately twenty eight students in non-public school placements. Those are, I call those inherited because they were there when I, when I arrived. And so I had to work through getting some of them back during that first year. Didn't make a lot of changes, you know, kind of just got the lay of the land, tried to understand what was happening. During the, so that was seventeen, eighteen. During the eighteen, nineteen school year, that, I'm sorry, yes, that number was reduced to sixteen. Okay, and then for nineteen, twenty, that number has gone down to fifteen. And for twenty twenty one, we're predicting thirteen. That goes hand in hand with looking at and providing the types of programs that allow our students to remain in district. When I arrived, we had four programs. We had a co-teaching program, a resource specialist program, our prime program and a preschool program. So we had four total programs. Again, that first year was looking, understanding what was happening, looking at the types of due process complaints we were receiving to understand where we were lacking in our programming. My, my first year, the eighteen, nineteen, I'm sorry, my second year, the eighteen, nineteen school year, I only added one program, which was the transition program at the high school. For our students after, in the prime program, after they finished twelfth grade, they are able to attend from age eighteen to about twenty two. And they leave with a certificate of completion. We did not have that program in place and we are actually legally mandated to have that. So I, I put that in place. Then for nineteen twenty three configuration, I added four more programs. So now we have co-teaching, resource specialist, RSP intervention, mild, moderate SDCs, those are, that stands for special day classes. We have our counseling enriched program, both at the middle school and the high school, and that's for students that have behavior concerns. Along with our prime program, our, our transition program and our preschool program. So through that, through those programs, we've been able to not place students outside of the district, but maintain them in district as much as possible. Now, are there sometimes, are there students that are some, that we have to place outside sometimes just because they're not able to be maintained on a comprehensive campus? Yes. But we are holding steady and we are slowly bringing some students back because we are able to have, have them in district because we now have a larger continuum and options of placements for our students. I think the other half of your question was, Mrs. Marcus, that are we predicting any new programs for twenty twenty one? Not at this time. We're going to continue with our eight programs, continue to fine tune those and revamp those, revamp those and keep them going. But again, as I said, we are predicting approximately thirteen students for non-public school placement and no students in residential placement right now. Let me talk a little bit about that because those are the, those residential placements are the, the most expensive placements that we have. Upon my arrival to Beverly Hills and White School District again in, in twenty seventeen, so I call that my, my inheritance, there were, hold on, I want to give you the correct information. There were two students in not, in residential placement. They were there when I got here. I had to work through those. We, we had, we tried to bring them home or graduate them. That continued. My second year, it went up to four. So we have some students move in. In a district like Beverly Hills, we have parents who have the means to unilaterally place students and then come back and say, oh, by the way, they're there and not, we want you to pay. This happens both with our surrounding districts, Santa Monica, Malibu, as well as Culver City. For this past school year, we had one student in residential placement, so we were able to successfully exit three, and that student only attended the residential placement for half of the year. They then transitioned back to district and to home and they're no longer in that residential placement. And then for, currently for twenty twenty one, we are predicting no students in residential. We may have one through a settlement agreement, but we're working to get these all resolved. So as you can see, over time, these out of district placements, the very expensive placements have continued to decline.
Thank you. The other, that was basically the, one of the things that I was looking at. I, I had made a note about, and I agree with, with everything that's been said prior to this and that it's such a fluid situation that it's hard to really predict anything at this point in terms of the budget. So I had the questions there. One was the fact that I was kind of disheartened by seeing the amount of reduction in the general fund or the reserve fund. That was a very big concern. And I know that that's a concern of the whole board and that we're going to try to, you know, work with that. And the other is, of course, the fact that we have not started negotiations at all with our union. And that is, that's a big concern of mine in terms of going forward. So I really appreciate everything that you shared with us today. Mr. Roach and I, I'm very confident that we're going to be able with the whys and with the, also the finance committee of being able to really try to hold, hold the line as much as possible and come out not so bad. But it doesn't look very good right now as far as, but it's fluid. It can change very, it could change tomorrow as far as we know. So thank you.
May I add two more things if, if the board would allow?
Sure.
Okay. The last thing, the last two things I wanted to point out were the total number of special education teachers and total number of instructional assistants over time. When I arrived in two thousand seventeen, there were a total of twenty six point nine teachers. Point nine because we had some teachers who were on leave or had a, had a partial schedule. And we had sixty three instructional assistants. That was after the board did that first round of reductions prior to my arrival. I believe there were twenty positions that were cut approximately prior to my arrival. For eighteen, nineteen, we had, we maintained, we had twenty six special education teachers and sixty two instructional assistants. So the only change to the budget, budget for that year were the, the stepping column changes for staff. For the nineteen, twenty school year, we operated, now remember, a, a more efficient program with four more layers with twenty four teachers and sixty four instructional assistants. Again, the only increase to the budget were stepping column and the four point nine two raise that was negotiated in the CBA.
What did you say? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
What, what do you need me to repeat, Mrs. Marcus?
What did you say were the instructional assistants?
Total number?
For 20?
For 19, 20, 64.
No, so 64. Okay.
Yes, 24 teachers and 64 instructional assistants.
60. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. And again, remember that was adding four layers of instruction to, to our program through reconfiguration. And then for night, for 2021, currently we are predicting 23 teachers. I am not filling a position at Horace Mann. We are absorbing the case load and dividing it amongst the current teachers. And 57 instructional assistants. Again, the only increase to the budget will be step in column and along with the, the COLA. That was part of the CBA. Well, I'm going. I might as well finish. I also wanted to just talk a little bit about our special education legal fees and our settlement agreements. When I arrived, I inherited 22 settlement agreements. And I addressed the board and, and said that I was concerned because some of them had been just rolled over from year to year, even though they were not active cases, which was kind of unprecedented. I received direction to start working on removing those. So for 2017 and 2018, there were 22 settlement agreements. For the year of 2018, 2019, that was reduced to 18. Approximately nine of those 18 were rollover agreements that I had to work through. Because some of those agreements were, were written for more than a period of, a period of more than one year. Some of them were written for two school years. So that would be 17, 18, 18, 19. 19, 20 and 2020, this year, there were a total of, give me one second. I want to tell you the right number. Eight settlement agreements. So we reduced our settlement agreements by 10. And our special education legal fund, legal fees, while reducing our number of cases, we are also reducing our legal fees. My first year, special ed legal fees were around $251,000. So that would be for 17, 18. For 18, 19, they were approximately $171,000. And currently for 19, 20, they're approximately $189,000. It's, but it's, it's projected every year around 190. And I would like to say that until we got this last case, we were hovering right around 110, 120. And then we had a big case come in at the end. So that kind of popped us up towards the end. And I'm hoping it is my goal to keep them under $150,000 for 20, 20, 20, 21. Okay, I'm done. Thank you. And, and board, I can share that document with you. I apologize that for some reason my permissions wouldn't let me show it because it's not a tab. So if, if, if it pleases the board and Dr. Brighi gives me that direction, I have a document that I can email to you with all those numbers and figures attached.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chisholm.
Thank you, Mrs. Chisholm. Anything else, Mrs. Marcus?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Chisholm for that. And I'm sure Dr. Brighi will be okay. You can send that to us later on. Okay. So Wade, I did have a question. You said that the LA county is holding on to 5% of the taxes. Do we have a reason why or is that, that's not normal, is it?
They generally hold on to a little bit of the April collection. They're holding on to a little bit more this year. And I think really it's because, you know, and I, and I can't point my finger to a particular property. But I've heard some taxpayers have not paid their, their property taxes in April. So it's not for those people that, like you and I, that, you know, do it every month or go through the bank. It's for those people that have these huge estates that just have to write a check for property taxes. And they're taking advantage of the COVID crisis and, and didn't pay. So I think I mentioned at the last board meeting that we're not a teetered county. So the county doesn't make us whole. They only give us what they get. So, so we have to, we're going to have to kind of push off them a little bit. You know, these people, they didn't pay. They're going to get a penalty. So in the end, it's going to hurt them. But you know, we're seeing this in all the high income areas. I talked to someone up in Carmel yesterday and they're having the same property. These people that own these estates did not pay, pay their April property taxes.
Okay. And, and do you have any, any inkling as to when? I know we got some communication from CSBA about, you know, the governor's budget and some pushback. Do you have any inkling as to when all that will be finalized perhaps?
They have 12 days from, from Monday to get it all together.
Okay, great. Okay. You know, I actually wanted to ask one more question regarding the, the JPA. So do you, do you, do you think that when we submit our budget, you'll have that in, in place so that it's part of the JP, of, of our budget that we'd be turning into Laco? Or do you, how, how are you going to get around that if that JPA agreement is not in place and stone?
So we would take it out of the adopted budget. Laco will not get to looking at our budget probably until the end of August. So we're always at the bottom of their pile. They have much, much more interest in the other districts. Ours is frankly too small and, and we're not a going concern. We have money. So they have to look at the other budgets. And frankly, we're the last district they look at. I would say that if it's unfortunate that we don't get a signed agreement by the end of June, the hope would be that we have one in place early in July. And that won't make, be a problem for the, for the budget. Laco will just, when they get around to look at the budget, they will say, can you send us a copy of the agreement? And then hopefully by the, by that time, we'll have that copy of the agreement.
Okay. And just to revamp a little bit. So we're going to have, you're going to adopt this budget just so that everyone understands. You're going, are you, it's going to be part of our regular board meeting in, when, in two weeks or next week? I can't hear you, Wade.
All right. So yeah, so the budget will be, I'll present the, we'll have a, a public hearing next Tuesday, the 23rd. And then we'll have the, immediately after that, we'll have the, the budget adoption.
Okay. Great. And the LCAP, I had asked Dustin earlier, but just for everyone's edification, the LCAP that we will be submitting with modifications will only be for COVID-19 till June. And then the regular LCAP will be adopted in December. And so when we, how are we going to capture like those, you know, new costs or expenditures because of COVID-19 post-June 2020? Would that be done later on in December when we submit our, our, our first interim budget? Is that the way you're going to work this in or?
No, I, I think not. I think this, this is the time where we, we have an option to, to change our budget 45 days after adoption. So if we have enough information, we can go in actually in August or September and actually adjust the budget again. So we don't need to wait until December.
Okay, great. Thank you. That was the question that I had mostly. Thank you so much for your presentation. I don't think there's any other questions from anyone from the board? No? Okay. I think this concludes our, Dr. Brighi was the, I, I do remember, is the finance committee with us? Did they want to weigh in or have a question or?
You know what? They were invited to the meeting, so.
Because I didn't see them, but I remember seeing that they were invited. So I didn't want to just close without giving them an opportunity to weigh in if, or if they had a comment or a question for the board or Wade.
And I'm not sure where that ended up. They were, I know that they were invited to attend, but it was also that the meeting was live as well. So I'm not sure where that ended, Mr. Roach, as far as today's meeting. I know that tomorrow was a different scenario, but I'll let you address today.
Yes. So the finance committee was invited and sent the link to make public comment before the discussion on the budget. I think there was a conflict. I believe there may be a city study session at the same time. So some of them were going to attend the city study session. So there probably was just a conflict.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. I think that concludes everything. I don't have any further questions. Thank you. We're going to now conclude our study session and we're going to go back into closed. So Dr. Brighi, are you going to send us another link?
So it's, we'll use the same link because it's really the same closed session. So we'll go back to the link that we used at 2:00.
Thank you for clarifying. Thank you again, Wade. Thank you, Mrs. Chisholm. And thank you Romeo and Juliet for covering this meeting. And Pam, of course, for always being present. And Rebecca.
Thank you. Goodbye.
Goodbye, everyone.
Bye, everybody.